Okay, so today is May 27. This is Planning Board. Actually, I think I might have to recuse myself from this one because my next door neighbor is buying the house and my neighbor over is buying the land, so I feel like a little too close to it. Like, they both talked to me about it. So I might recuse myself from this. So I don't know if Danielle, if you could take over.
Okay, so. Oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, I will place you in a waiting room, Eric.
Yep.
And then we'll add you back in once this business item is completed. So Danielle, you don't mind acting as chair?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, great. All right, Eric, we'll see you in a little bit.
Yep.
Okay, Eric has been removed. So just as a reminder, in terms of the remote participation guidelines, I would just ask that anyone that is not being asked to speak, be placed, please place yourself on mute, so there's no additional background noise for the board. So we can move forward.
So do I just need to read this component?
Yeah.
So the Planning Board is to endorse an approval not required plan for 50 Bear Hill Road. The plan subdivides the property into three frontage lots with one other lot retaining the existing dwelling. Do we have a plan?
We do. Let me switch to the plan. And just to update that information, I received a more updated plan where they're subdividing into only two lots. So this will be the plan you see here as the updated A and R. Do we have an applicant present that can speak to this plan?
We do. Good evening. Bruce Ringwall from Goldsmiths Preston Ringwall.
Thank you, Bruce. Can you give us just a brief introduction?
Certainly. Good evening. My name's Bruce Ringwall from Goldsmiths Preston Ringwall, representing Brian Payson, the owner of the property at 50 Bear Hill Road. The property is roughly 27 acres and we're proposing to divide it into two lots. The existing house lot will be 11 and 1/2 acres in round numbers. And to the north of that, we'll be creating a lot that's 15 acres in round numbers. They have obviously adequate frontage and adequate area. And I'll turn it over to you for any questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions right off. Does any of the Planning Board members have any questions?
Just out of curiosity, why, you know, it was a three-lot subdivision. Now it's down to two. Was there a reason for that?
Certainly. I apologize for the three-lot subdivision. We looked at a number of different concepts for how the land was, could potentially be dealt with. And after reviewing your bylaws and regulations, the property owner was fortunate to find two buyers for the property. One is interested in Lot 2 and the other is interested in the house and the remaining land. And so I don't know how that plan actually got to you. Probably somebody in my office sent the wrong plan out at one point or maybe the homeowner set an earlier concept out. But this is the way the property is intended to be developed. Developed, not developed, it's intended to be split. And there's more behind that. And if I slide the right way, there's an aerial of the land right in my desktop or my background behind me of the land. And the trees at the top of that, oops, it's always hard to do this backwards. These at the top of that up in there are the end of the lot. The northern, the northern end of the lot, shown on the plan here, is the wooded section.
Okay, do they all have any more questions or comments?
So the area from the road back to about the stone wall, that's all, that's the open field area on the, behind you?
I'm sorry, Mark, say it one more time.
The area between the road and the stone wall, that's the grass area on the view behind you?
Yes. And if you see on the map, do you see my cursor on the map on the plan? No, probably not. Okay. To the northern end, there's a little rectangle that sits perpendicular almost to the stone wall. That's about where the tree line starts, heading between the stone wall and the field and the road. So the property extends into the woods beyond that stone wall.
Okay. Okay. And I assume that you've shown that there's an adequate septic reserve area on the remaining lot one?
That, that's correct. I've had conversations with Mr. Brookings around that. The septic testing is shown, the septic system is shown in the front and there was testing done for that system. And the trenches are spaced wide enough apart for reserve trenches between. So a reserve system can go right between them.
Okay. Okay.
Bruce, do you mind me asking? Initially, when this came before me to be placed on a Planning Board agenda, I had been talking with Dan Gaffney from the Bolton Conservation Trust. He had been working to help the buyer sort of preserve this in conservation. Is the intention for Lot 2 to be built on or to be maybe someday combined with another parcel?
Um.
No?
We're stepping beyond the realms of an A and R plan, but it's my understanding that the abutter to the north is buying Lot 2 to combine that land with their land. And the abutter to that abutter is, my understanding, the purchaser of the house.
Okay. Thank you. I do understand that that was, that question was beyond the jurisdiction of an A and R plan, but it did, it was brought up, so I thought I would just circle back to it.
It's, it's my understanding that as a Planning Board, you'll be very pleased with the outcome of the property.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions.
From the audience? All right. Can someone entertain a motion to approve the A and R?
I will move that we approve the A and R for lots 1 and 2 on Bear Hill Road.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? James, I'm assuming you were for that because I think I cut you off. All right, here, I'll do it one more time. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed abstentions? Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. So as far as the endorsement of the plan, how does the board want to work that right now? What I can do, what I actually have done today when I was in the office, I placed the paper copies in the Mylar along with the appropriate pen in the, in the mailbox that we now have outside the front door where we have our meetings. Would it be feasible for each of you to, at some point during the day, go over, open the mailbox, take the plans out, sign them? Or if that doesn't work, we can figure out an alternative way to get it signed. I did check the Registry of Deeds to see if we can do an electronic signature, but for A and R plans, I did not see that as being an item that could be accepted as with electronic signature. No.
I can come by tomorrow.
You just need to, yeah.
Okay. I'll send an email to the board with more specific instructions with how to get into the mailbox and all of that.
Okay.
Bruce, once it's signed, did you want me to mail this? Is someone from your office picking it up? The town hall will begin a soft opening next week by appointment if someone wanted to stop by and pick it up.
I think that we'd like to do that. I know that that way I can get it to the proper people so they can move forward with their closings.
Okay. So as far as the board goes, do you think that you'd all be able to sign by Sunday evening?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So Bruce, why don't you email me with the day that works for you next week? And then we'll, we'll get that scheduled.
Certainly. I'll send you an email tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you all for your time and thank you for holding meetings during this time. I know you're not required to and on behalf of my client, we appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay. Eric, are you back in?
I think so. Can you hear me?
I can.
Yep.
That's a nice waiting room, Mark.
Yeah.
Seats nice and warm.
Go spend some time there.
Yeah, that chain of abutters that he was talking about, I'm like across the street from those guys. So I know it wasn't a controversial thing, but if it was, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to be involved.
Better safe than sorry.
Yeah. If it was controversial, I definitely wouldn't want to be involved. So I guess the same thing should, you know, go if it isn't controversial.
Yep.
All righty. Seats warm for you, Mark.
Oh, boy. Thanks.
So 147 Long Hill Road, come here. Yep.
Yep. Okay. Magic here.
All right. So I am sending Mark into the waiting room since he's in the abutter to 147 Long Hill Road. I just need to, all right, see you in a few. All right, there, Mark is in the waiting room.
Okay. So we've already closed the hearing. We're just here to approve the final decision, basically. I've read through it, how many issues. I know there was some emails from a couple of residents, but the hearing is closed. I don't know if we're in.
No, no new information can be accepted at this point. The public hearing is closed. And Eric, before we get too far along into the discussion, I just want to relay that Peter was unavailable to come tonight. So the board can certainly begin its deliberation, but there's no, no vote can be taken tonight since he's not present.
Oh, because we only have.
Because he participated in that public hearing process.
Don't we still have a quorum or no?
Do.
I mean, I guess we could hold on. I don't.
You know, the board's still within that 90-day period to deliberate and come to, you know, come to a vote.
I don't mind waiting.
If we have a quorum.
Yeah.
Will we want to move forward? Yeah.
I would really, I guess the only thing that perhaps the board would want to do then is Kevin Erickson is on this, is participating in this meeting tonight. So you would just want to pass it by him because he may want a full board to vote versus four in case there are any names.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, Kevin, go ahead.
Did we have alternates sitting on that board who were at all of the hearings?
Yes. So all, so in place of Mark Sprague was James Barr, our associate.
Okay. So we have four out of the five.
We have four out of the five.
Honestly, I'm okay moving forward.
Okay. So it's up to you guys. If you want to vote tonight, we can certainly do that. Or the board can certainly do that.
I just think I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I think so.
Yep.
Okay. So I began drafting a decision for you. Would you like to review it now?
Sure. Yeah.
So here is the document that's only been internal to this point. Now that it's being publicized in a public meeting, it is now a public document. So this is our sort of standard template for a special permit document. So we've updated it with the current owners, the deed references, when the submission for the modification was provided to the town, type of application, hearing date, members participating. So with that, Peter Driscoll's name will need to, I'll have to take him out of this document. Or I'll have to think about that. I don't know if I take his name out because he did participate in the hearing and I just take his name out for the record of vote. That, that may be what I do.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this, based on the way things had progressed in the public hearing, there didn't seem to be a lot of pushback for the modifications. So I drafted this with the expectation that the board would grant it. However, obviously, the board can, you know, can go in whatever direction they so choose in their deliberation.
So just, just to refresh the main modifications, we have the slope at the driveway, right?
Yep. I haven't gotten there yet. So here's the procedural history of the, in the decision that talks about the submission of the application, the public hearing, the dates of that, when we commenced it, how it was advertised in the paper. I also have information in here about now being conducted via Zoom. Mark Sprague was identified as an abutter, so he was refused. Walter Erickson and Kevin Erickson being present, the peer reviewer engineer, Fred Hamway being present. And then here are the findings. And this is where we get into more of the details of what was discussed. See here. So here, Eric, we start talking about the design deviations. Okay. So number four, the applicant seeks approval of the following design deviations of the common driveway. So the first one was the driveway slope at the entrance exceeded 4%. And based on what I had taken for meeting minutes, I put the driveway appears to function adequately after years of observation and does not pose a safety or engineering concern as noted by the applicant's engineer. B, the common driveway was not constructed with a crown as designed between stations 0 and 5, 510. And then under there, I say the existing super elevated design of the driveway does not pose a safety or engineering concern as noted by the applicant's engineer. Super elevated common driveways are permissible at the board's discretion. In addition, a drainage well was installed to alleviate any excess water flow over the asphalt berm at stations 350 to 375. The first turnout of the common driveway begins at station 306, which exceeds the maximum 300-foot design spacing. The driveway turnout continues to allow vehicles to pass each other at a regular interval as intended by Bolton's bylaws and regulations. The driveway turnout at station 600 is approximately 24.7 feet by 17.3 feet, where 25 foot by 18 foot is required. The dimensions of the driveway turnout are in substantial performance with the approved special permit and site plans. The driveway turnout at station 900 is approximately 25.1 feet by 16.6 feet, where 25 foot by 18 foot is required. The dimensions of the driveway turnout are in substantial performance with the approved special permit and site plans. Again, the same thing with the other turnout at station 1200. And the dimensions of the driveway turnout are in substantial performance with the approved special permit and site plan. G, the drainage well size at station 300 to 400, the deviation in the drainage well size does not impact the safety or functionality of the common driveway. And then last, the height and caliber of certain plantings. The height and caliber of the plantings do not impact the safety or functionality of the common driveway. And then I just noted in number five that the owners of the common driveway provided testimony to the board in favor of the board granting a modification to common driveway special permit to accept the design deviations noted above. In their testimony, the only owners were dissatisfied with some of the work completed to date and were not in favor of the applicants conducting any further extensive construction on the driveway. In regards to a decision, excuse me, I had added in some conditions here. The board can deliberate and decide whether or not you want to keep these. Condition one, granting this modification does not alleviate the applicant from his responsibility of completing any outstanding items required by the board and its engineer. And then number two, granting of this modification to common driveway does not imply approval of a bond release or reduction associated with the driveway. And then from there, it's really just, you know, the record of vote, whether or not Eric will sign on behalf of the board and then the 20-day appeal period information. So.
So, so we have to have a separate discussion for bond release after this?
Yes. Yes, that is correct. This is only for the modification of the special permit.
Okay.
Two separate things.
Did we establish what the actual slope was for 4A? And can we add that into the document?
It depends on how you calculate the slope. I think the way that the applicant had calculated it and the way that Fred Hamway had calculated it were two different things. But we can certainly add that in. Actually, I, yeah, we can add in the actual slope of the driveway. I think Fred Hamway is on this call. Fred, do you recall what that slope was?
Yes, it was broken down into 10-foot intervals. And I want me to just read those out again?
Sure.
Starting at Long Hill Road, the first eight feet has a slope of 3.2%. Are you writing this down, Erica?
I am, yeah. No, I'm writing it down.
Yep. So the first eight feet has 3.2%. The next 11 feet has a slope of 8.3%.
Yep.
The next nine feet has a slope of 8.7%. And the remaining 10 feet, the next 10 feet has a slope of 8.3. So for the most part, it's in, it's in just, it's above 8% except for the first eight feet.
Okay. So this is roughly the first 40 feet of the driveway.
Correct. I think it comes out to 38 feet, is it? I think at 38 feet, something like that.
Okay. So these are the numbers. If the board agrees, these are the numbers that I'll incorporate into the decision.
Sounds good to me. Any other, anything else to go over, Erica, or any other discussion points there? Oh, I think Eric is gone.
It's frozen.
It's frozen. I don't have any other questions on this.
She's cut out before. Usually it takes her a minute to come back.
Yeah.
Anything fun happen today?
It's hot.
I had a carpenter ant catastrophe.
Yeah, I noticed a couple around the house today. The hot weather drives them in.
Yeah.
A bunch, bunch around mine as well.
Yeah, I baited and killed what I think was one nest in my, but all of a sudden in my family room, they were just everywhere. I don't know.
Ugh.
Yeah.
The real, the big ones?
Yeah, carpenter.
Yeah. Nasty.
So we'll see. I put some bait in the family room to see if they weren't taking it. I just don't like dousing my family room with chemicals.
Well, you've got some rot somewhere. So if you have some rot somewhere, that's what they're after.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Erica's back.
It's okay. We were chit-chatting. So I was, I was saying, is there anything else to discuss?
Let's hold on one minute. I accidentally, I had a couple of people in the waiting room and I accidentally let Mark in, I believe. So let me make sure that he's not here.
Oh, boy.
Vanished.
Well, my one question is, is there any major safety issues with the, with the deviation of the driveway? I mean, is it really a, I won't say a big deal. Is it? Is it something that might come up?
I think everybody was okay with it. They weren't happy with it, but they were okay with it. The residents were okay with it. And Fred Hamway said that it was in general okay. I mean, people weren't happy about it, but.
I mean, the fact that, I mean, I've driven it myself. And the fact that you go on the uphill to pull out onto long, to pull out onto the main road there. I'm sorry, I don't, the main road, it's actually not that bad. But as long as, as long as everybody's okay with the safety factor, I'm good with it. I don't see it as much of an issue.
So anything else, Erica, that we need to discuss before we vote on this?
No, as long as the board feels comfortable with what's written in this decision, I'll go ahead and add the, you know, the comment about the, providing the actual slopes of the entrance by. Yeah. The board comfortable with those conditions I've, I've put in there?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
Are there any other conditions that the board would like to see?
If we were saying just for me to vote, do we do that now or after?
I'm sorry, say that again?
If we were saying just for me to vote on this, do we have to do this before we vote on it or after we vote on it?
Just for you to sign, I think.
Just for me to sign, sorry.
Just for you, yeah. The whole board would need to vote to approve it and then there would be a second vote to allow you to sign on behalf of the board.
Okay. All right. Well, let's get a motion. Someone?
I'll make a motion to approve the modification to the common driveway special permit of 147 Long Hill Road.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seats sound unanimous.
Why don't we take a roll call of that just so that, because it's remote, let's, I think it'd be best to have a roll call. So Eric Nyland?
Aye.
James Barr?
Aye.
Michael Gore?
Aye.
And Danielle Spicer?
Aye.
Erica, is this one that I can sign electronically or do you need my real, real signature?
So I had taken a look on the, actually, I can pull it up.
Just sign it when you're, oh, you're not signing the A and R.
Well, I'm not, so. If I have to.
Yes.
If I have to, that's fine. Go ahead.
I think this is worth just taking a look at together.
Danielle, sign it.
All right. So this is the Registry of Deeds website. I was taking a look at it earlier today. So on April 8th, they, they updated it to allow for electronic signatures on certain documents. So anything that requires, it says here, anything that requires authorization from government entities are not allowed. So they give a list of things that would be allowed. So here, a lot of the COMCOM permits are, would be allowed. Now, it just generally says decisions. I'm, I would assume that special permits and modifications to special permits I would assume that special permits and modifications to special permits would be included in, in that category. However, to confirm, I would like to, I would probably call the registry if I can get ahold of someone, just to make sure that that's right. It's, it's up to you, Eric. I, I feel like, I'd feel a little more comfortable if, for just at least this decision, if we could do a wet signature, just because I'm not 100% on the procedural requirements for the electronic signature at this point. But I think this is something that I should dive into, so that way, moving forward, if we're still in this circumstance with another project, we'd have, we'd have that option.
Yeah, that's fine. Can we have Danielle do it? Does it have to be me? Either way, it's fine.
I mean, I'm coming, I'm coming over to sign the A&R plan as well, so if you wanted to add that for me to sign, I can.
Um...
If you think that you missed you there.
Yeah, I've just never seen a decision where the vice chair has signed on behalf of the board. I just, it may very well be an option, I just don't know. I'm happy Eric, you know, if it makes you feel... Okay, okay.
Just have me do it, it's fine.
So, do you want me to make a motion for Eric to sign on behalf of the planning board? Is it appropriate to do that now?
It's been foretold, so yeah.
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion for Eric Nyland to sign on behalf of the planning board for the 147 Long Hill Road decision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Okay, next. You're gonna flip back to the...
I will, just one second. Let me have Mark enter meeting as well.
I think the color you did lasts longer than what she did.
I know.
Isn't it?
Well, it's her formula.
But it's been three weeks, four weeks?
I know. I'll second that, too. Boy, I have curly hair. So much of it falls out of your...
That's Mark.
Let's scroll back.
I don't know.
All right, next up, we got, wanna scroll a little, Erica?
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
Yeah, thanks. We got Andrew Bennison for Central Estates, which to discuss, he's gonna provide an update on Phase 2 and 4 road construction, including the following request provision to joint check agreement with aggregate requested joint check agreement with Gorka Construction, review the bond amount, and status of insurance policy with Arcadia Insurance Company. Is Andy here, or?
Was, let me take a look.
I can see you.
Oh, there you are, Andy, hi.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's well.
Thank you.
How you doing, Andy?
Doing okay, other than the, what everybody else is dealing with, we're all dealing with.
Yeah. So you making progress in this at all, or you're able to construct them?
I submitted to Erica this afternoon contract for aggregate, a contract for Gorka Construction, and joint check agreements for both. As you may recall, the planning board had previously signed a joint check agreement for aggregate. Since then, and the joint check agreement with aggregate previously signed was for approximately $189,000. I think, 180, very close to $190,000. The final numbers that came in from aggregate are, could go as high as $205,000. So I don't think it will go quite to $205,000, but the aggregate is requesting a revised joint check agreement with the amount increased by $15,000 to $205,000. That's the first thing.
Okay, so do we, so we already have it signed for Erica?
You signed it previously for $190,000.
Right.
And the agreement itself, the language and everything is, stays exactly the same, it's just the amount.
So do we have to redo this, Erica?
Yeah, it's, we'd have to sign again.
Other than that, the final form of the contract was submitted to Erica. It's been approved by me, it's been approved by aggregate. And once the check agreement is revised, everybody will sign it, and that takes care of them.
This was the original joint check agreement that the board voted on in February, and here's the amount here, $189,666. So Andy submitted today. I have revised version of this, I just have to find it. Here it is. Is this right? Oh, I think, Andy, your numbers got inverted, so this should say $205,000 here.
Well, no, I didn't change, no, I didn't change that.
I think that's the same as what you had in the, the blank is what I changed.
That's the approximate amount that the town is holding.
Oh, okay.
I didn't, I didn't make any changes other than I blanked out the amount. It used to say 189,660. And I took off signatures that previously were on it.
Okay, my apologies, yeah, here it is, here's the, the...
And by the way, I believe the town is holding, it's close to 257%.
It's around 255, roughly.
That doesn't need to be changed.
And then here's another document, Andy, that you submitted today. So what it, what am I looking at here?
That's the first page of the contract. It just summarizes originally the, the contract amount, actually, the current contract amount is 179,647. But we received an email from aggregate on May 19th, which is included in the contract that I sent you. And basically, in addition to the reclaim work that was already included in the contract for the first 800 feet on Milpon Road, and another section near the end of Milpon Road, that reclaim was already included. But when we walked the site with Fred Hamway and also with Joe Lynch, there were a couple other areas that had some signs of alligator, that we called it, cracking. So I had aggregate build into the contract for eight additional locations where they may have to do a reclaim. It's just an estimate, so contract has eight, 20 by 22, so 20 feet in length by the width of the pavement. If, if, when we go to pave and the inspector's walking around and he says, "You gotta take out the binder in this section," it's already included up to eight places. The next item, that was $7,858. The next item, that was in aggregate's email of May 19th, we have about approximately 4,000 to 5,000 feet of berm that we're gonna take up. So when we take up the berm, it's possible that you can damage the binder underneath. So if it's damaged everywhere, it would be $15,000 for them to like, re, put down the binder in those, underneath where the berm goes. So that's what that 15,55 will be. It probably won't be that much. That would be if, if it got ruined everywhere, we take up the berm, which it, it won't, but. And then the last thing was saw cutting the driveways to, if we wanted them to do the work versus Gorka Construction doing the work, or somebody else saw cutting the driveways. It's 2,000, so additional work above what they, the contract amount is $25,013.50, which would bring the total possible obligation to aggregate, bring it up to 205,60.50. That's why they want the, they wanna know that if, if it was all that, you're gonna write them a check.
So this is the contract, Andy?
Correct.
Okay, and this is a redlined version?
It is, this is the, well, not all the red lines are theirs, but some of them are.
Okay, so the expectation is if the board agrees to this revised joint check agreement and it gets signed, then the next step will be for them to sign this contract and you to sign this contract?
They've already approved it.
Yeah.
Gone through their legal department. And you will see, if you had scrolled through, you would see some changes from their legal department.
I saw that, yeah. And then this here, you had also sent me this relating to aggregate. So this is what you just talked about, the additional...
May 19th email.
Alright, so this is, this is what we just discussed, but in a little more detail. Okay. So I know, Andy, you are requesting another joint check agreement with Gorka Construction, who will be doing sort of the initial work with raising the structures. Does the board wanna review the bond first before getting into that, or what would be a good order to sort of review all of this? Me? Andy, what would you prefer to do? Do you wanna go through the bond first, or talk about the joint check agreement with Gorka?
Whichever your preference is, I guess you're asking me what my preference is. I think
Yes.
it's a good idea to go through the overview of the bond, so that the planning board has a...
Hold on one minute, I just have to pull it up. Okay. Alright, so this is the email you sent today regarding the bond.
You had requested this.
Yes, I did. Yep. So the work associated with the work that Gorka will be doing, or I'm sorry, the pricing associated with the work that Gorka will be doing is 21,940?
Correct. Gorka is not just raising the structures. Gorka is also going to be removing the berm where it has to be removed. Also, there is four inlet granite pieces, or four, you know, behind the catch basins, there was a granite piece, you know, that's granite berm, not, not asphalt. Four of them had, that had cracks in them. And so those are already on site. And also, there were some cracks in some of the granite, in the cul-de-sacs.
Okay.
We've already paid for that.
So based on the...
Gorka's doing all of that labor work.
Okay.
They're also doing
So based on...
driveway work. And
Right.
They're doing, where the sidewalks intersect the driveways, may have recalled that some of them need some adjusting to be ADA compliant. The Disabilities Act, it cannot have a slope greater than a certain percentage, which I forget what the percentage is right off the top of my head, I think it's 7% maybe, but I'm not sure. But whatever that percent is, unless it's on a street that's on a hill, but it's on a flat road, it can't be more than that percent. So they're going to be adjusting the sidewalks in those areas, so that's all Gorka.
Okay, so here's the number that we have in the bond. We have roughly $255,000 currently in the bond. You have here that $205,000 based on the updated number from aggregate, and then the 21,940 from Gorka totaling $226,940. So you're saying that we'll have an additional $27,834 remaining. And the board had approved holding $20,000 in the insurance policy over the winter, prior to road acceptance next town meeting. Let me switch to the actual breakdown of the, of the bond estimate now. So this was this is what you had sent today, right, Andy? Where you had taken out...
This is Fred Hamway's bond estimate with, like, the street trees have already been put in, so there, that's already zero. It's been, I revised it myself, because it's, it had a number in there before, but they're already in, so it's zero. The island plantings, we've already done. And we also already did the cleaning of the catch basins. Other than that, that's Fred's bond estimate.
But what you're showing here...
Post paving.
Okay, that's what I was just gonna get at, is that, that you're, basically you're providing the bonding post paving.
This is what Fred's estimate, I believe, would look like post paving.
Okay.
And it, and it goes down a little further, yeah.
So, based on Fred's number, taking out the work that Gorka's doing, taking out the work that aggregate's doing, the remaining work after that would be about $41,500 worth of work, according to Fred, Fred's numbers.
Also, he's taking out the plantings in the cul-de-sac, and those are the first two items?
That's, that's right, I'm sorry. And, and work that he's done, yeah, I apologize, yes, and the work that he's done up till, up till now. Since last May.
And Fred's not reviewing anymore, correct, so?
Well, Fred, Fred has seen that. He also...
Andy, you're talking about the trees and the plantings?
Yes.
Right?
Yes. Also, when we cleaned the catch basins...
No, the detention basins, I saw.
Basins.
Right, okay. So I, I haven't officially seen or signed off on the street trees and the island plantings.
Oh, I didn't know Fred was here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, Andy. So I haven't officially done those two. For the most part, when I was there, just seeing some other things, they look like most of all that was done, but it hasn't been officially. But um it hasn't been officially. But once again, post, it, there's a lot of items here, which is also post. The bulk of it, the 230,000 or so is um post raising the uh doing the asphalt raising, the catch basins, putting in the curb and so forth.
Correct.
Can I watch the third one?
Um so Erica, how do we move forward with that?
Okay, um just, there, there's a, in the CME column, there's an error down, uh down line 37. Really, it's missing a subtotal.
And it does, I noticed that after I sent it to Eric.
Okay, which actually bumps the uh, yeah, not that subtotal, there's another subtotal down uh
Yeah.
eight more lines.
He didn't add in uh the asphalt.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so the CME number is actually more like 33,215.
Correct.
Okay.
This number here, Mark, that's his 21,000 should be 32?
33,215, yeah. 12,000 more than it is.
My number is really not the important number, but anyway, it's Fred's number.
Oh, I mean, it, it, it's, it's a big enough discrepancy that I, yeah, it caught my eye to, to, to review, so.
No, I, I didn't think you'd care what I thought anyway, but.
So I, I guess the point of looking at this is just to understand that we have around $255,000 sitting in the bond. Um work to be completed by aggregate is around 205,000. The work to be completed by Gorka is around 21,000. Um at this point, with the joint check agreements, we're essentially waiving any multiplier at this point. And then making sure with the breakdown of these numbers that we'll still have the $20,000 for, um you know, over the course of the winter, as well as making sure that the insurance policy is in place. Um I think those are the important things. Um so, Andy, can you talk about, can you give an update?
Can I explain something in this that might be of value? Um the numbers, Andy took out my numbers in the um in my bond estimate, okay, for the post, for the, for aggregate and Gorka. At that time, it was 190 in there. There's another 15,000. So if you go to the bottom line, 41, uh I'm sorry, the bottom, uh what was my number before you took it out? It was 254, no, I'm sorry, I had it up.
The original.
I had before.
The original, the original numbers are included on the Excel spreadsheet on a different tab at the bottom, so your original is there.
Okay, so Fred, here's the original from last June.
Okay. So go to the bottom there. To my total.
Yep, your total's right here, 277,860.
Okay, I don't see if that's fine. Um it's not scrolled down on my screen.
You can't see that? Can, can, and can anyone see that or?
Keep on going, keeps rolling.
Really?
Going.
Really? Oh, this is so strange. I don't know why. That's, that's the end of my document.
Okay, there, 277. That should really be another 15,000. Does that make sense to everyone?
On top of the 277?
Right, because that extra 15,000 that Andy was just talking about that brought it to 205, my numbers up above that added up to 190, not 205 for Gorka and aggregate. So because of this additional items, possible additional items, right, Andy?
Yes, but I don't necessarily, I don't think I agree with you in the sense, Fred, that what I'm talking about is after the work is done, how much the town will have, my numbers.
Right, but they took that work out and it says it's 40 there, right? 41? But that number should have been 15 higher if it was there before.
But if the work is already completed, it doesn't really matter what the number was.
Yep, you're right. I'm sorry, it's still come out to the, yes, you're right. Um no. Yes, you're right, Andy, sorry.
No, it's fine.
No, you're right. Okay, but forget what I said.
Yeah, I was trying to give the planning board a snapshot of where we will be after the work is done.
You're right, it still would be the 40 whether I had a, a higher number in to begin with, it would have took out more. Yep.
Okay, so roughly speaking, roughly speaking, we have 255K in um in the account, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and aggregate is gonna be roughly 205, which leaves about 50K. Gorka is another 22, which leaves um basically 28K approximately in the account. And we need to cover 31,5.
Yeah.
Using, using Fred's numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you, and then, and then another 20 for, um over the winter.
Well, I think 20 is just part of the 41, and like we wouldn't release more than that.
No, 20, 20 isn't, 20 isn't, 20 isn't covered anywhere in the, I think the 20 is to cover any da- to cover any damage, isn't it?
That's what the insurance policy was for. Um but 20K, I, I think the way we came up with that number was if the drainage system and the detention basins needed to be cleaned again, we sort of added up some of those items, maybe loam and seed as well. I, I don't remember now. But I, I believe that's sort of how we came up with that 20,000.
Okay, but so that's included in the 41,5?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we're roughly 14K short then.
And may I just point out, I'll uh mo- a, a large portion of the asphalt's are already done. Because when we're building, before we pave, we do asphalt. Also, before we loam and seed detention basins, we do asphalt. So the survey work, the bulk of the work is done. Not saying it's all done, but the expensive part of it, major portion of it is done. So when, you know, when you look at the $41,000, if the asphalt's not done, the town's not gonna accept the road.
Yep.
So anyway, I mean. If you take out the asphalt and putting in the uh the uh bounds, that's on the, I think, between the two, that's like 20 grand.
Yeah, both of those are required, so it's, it's not really a.
Not construction.
So.
Yeah, the concern that we talked about in the past is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Eric.
No, that's fine. It sounded like Andy were asking for some release, but to me, it seems like we have what we need, if not more, currently. E- even with, even if we take your, the amount that you reduced to 33, I, I think that's what we were. I think that's what we were in. Alright. It sounds like we're uh pretty even, close to it.
I guess maybe I'm confused. I thought the way it stated right now is if we were to release, what, what's the bond amount being asked to be released right now?
Nothing at present. I think it's the request to approve the joint check agreements. And then as the work is completed and approved by our inspector, um and invoices are submitted, we'll, we'll pay the contractor directly.
Okay, so I guess my concern is, um so if we were to increase the amount, you know, to the 205 as was previously noted in the 21 for the other stuff, it seems like what Mark was mentioning is that we are short about 14,000. Is that, like, if that all work gets done and it gets released and the, you know, everything's okay, we may be not holding enough if the rest of the stuff doesn't get done. Is that what I'm hearing?
That, that's, that's my understanding as well.
Correct. But the work as far as construction would be done. Talking about plans and bounds. And the town.
Yeah, I mean, but an asphalt plan is pretty important to.
No, I understand, but all I'm trying to say is the town is not gonna accept roads unless they have them. Oh. I'm not, I'm not trying to say that we're not at, that, that is not a $14,000 potential shortfall. I'm just saying that the construction would be complete. And you would still, you know, you would not have accepted the uh roads.
Well, I think we are holding back 20, you know, regardless, until it was accepted and everything was turned in. Uh so I think we were covered there.
I'm not sure where that, where you think that 20 is, but okay.
Well, it's just, you know, when, when we'll, we were gonna release up, we're gonna release up to 20 and not any more than that until everything was accepted, I think is how it was. Am I wrong, Erica?
I, I can pull up the, I can tell you what the vote was back last August. Danielle spaced her motion to allow, instead of 10% of the bond to be held over the winter, a combination of the insurance policy and 20 grand once 100% of the construction in phases two and four is complete prior to road acceptance, seconded by Mark, all in favor.
So I guess on that, um when it says 100% of the construction, I know the paving and all that type of stuff is, um would be 100% done, but is there, it looks there are still other construction items that beyond that that needed to be done? Or am I mistaken on that?
No, there are other items that need to be completed outside of the work that aggregate.
All of the construction, minor uh minor construction, like light for $1,500, but the construction is done essentially 100%.
So according to, Andy, according to what you had submitted today, um if you take out the work from aggregate and Gorka and the work that you've done since May, there would be $29,500 worth of work remaining, and that's outside of the asphalt plans.
Well, but that also includes, the big item in that number is the, um I think the bounds is a big number.
Yes, yep.
So um that's not, I don't consider that construction. I mean, that's part of your asphalt. So construction.
But that, is that part of what needs to be done for the acceptance of the road?
Yes. And you would not have accepted the road yet.
But those need to be installed in order for the road to be accepted.
Correct.
Yes. And you have enough money to do it. You'll have $27,000.
Who will have $27,000?
The town will still have $27,000 in cash. I guess we'd still be able to draw on that down until it's 20.
Yeah, so the basically 41,000 in work that's remaining, you could draw down 7,000 of that out of the bond or out of the account.
Yeah.
I guess I'm having a hard time with the, with the, with the fact that asphalt's a part of the entire package. If one of the projects is completed, I mean, I don't know why this is all of a sudden not a nowhere that the asphalt's costing more money and it should have been a part of the original package.
We, we just, we started adding that in uh recently. So when we.
The asphalt's?
No, adding it to the uh, to the bond. Originally, we didn't add it to the bond. I think, maybe Fred can answer, but I think we've started doing.
No, but aspilts are always a part of any construction project. Aspilts are a part of, from, from day one, that, you know, you're, you're gonna get them. And I just, I, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around why all of a sudden this is an extra.
I don't, I think it's, no, I think it's that the aggregate is now 15,000 more, and that's the discrepancy.
It wasn't an extra. It was an extra to Andy's, all the red was Andy's initial estimate. It was in those two sub, the 2,010 and uh 10,000 for removal, that was additional to the line items he had in his, in his bond. It wasn't extra to the bond, it was extra to his line items, items that he didn't include.
Oh, that's why you called it other items?
Correct.
I see.
In other words, I agreed with everything above it. If he had, I don't know, um XYZ not included, I would have put that in the other items. Because Andy on the red side did not have numbers there. So I was showing the comparison up through the first subtotal of what he had submitted. And then there were some item, line items that weren't in there that I added in. If you look on um uh other ones, we've done, that's done something similar to what, I think it might have been Tadmore, that they didn't um have every line item covered. But that's what it's, it's not, it's in there from the beginning, but it wasn't in there in the contractor's initial bond estimate.
So the asphalt plans were not a part of the initial contract?
No, it, the, the way the bond estimate is, is done from a chronological point of view, is we submit one, we, we do, we submit it to Fred. He reviews it. So what he's saying is, when I submitted it, I did not have removed erosion control, and I did not have asphalt plans. But he added it, it to the form. That's, and then called it other item.
Correct.
It's always been on there.
Yeah, but asphalt's always a part of. I mean, I, I get the remove and the remove of the erosion control. I, I totally understand that. But asphalt's always a part. But as-bills are always a part of any type of work you do.
Yes.
I think it might have been way back. EGC.
I think everyone froze. Go ahead, Fred. What, what were you saying?
I think, and I have to look back way, way, way back when the first bond estimate was done by GCG, the original designers. I don't recall if it was in there or not, but when Andy or really Fred Kuhn did this latest one, he didn't include that line item. Whether or not he, I don't think he went back and looked to see what the original bond estimate was, as much as he took what he determined had to be done since last May or June when he first submitted it. And said, these are the things have to be done. They aren't the same definition of line items as the original, original one. For instance, I looked through it, he had, he submits this, I looked through them on my own and I see, oh, whatever, Handy, uh, Batum and Spur, he included three things in that. I had it three separate items. So I included it as one. I tried to put my numbers, even though I might have had more line items in, and he might have, um, consolidated line items. And so I tried to match his, since that was, as of a year ago, the original submittal. So he did not have those other two line items in there. I come up with my own line items, but I tried to, instead of changing what was submitted, I lined it up with what was submitted.
I mean, $10,000 in, in the scope of the plan is a drop in the bucket ultimately.
But it's included in the 41.
Yeah, I just-
No, no, it's included in the number. The total's the total. Included. Erica, can you scroll down just a few lines to the total?
Can you see that?
41.5, that includes the as-bills. So the $14,000 shortfall, um, actually it's $13,000, but 41.5. It includes the as-bills. It includes the bounds. It includes everything.
Andy, are you holding bond? Is, is the Conservation Commission holding bond as well?
No.
They are not. Okay.
They were, but they were, they were.
Okay. I didn't know if that removal of the erosion controls also fell under conservation or not. That's the only reason why I asked.
Erica, so what's the goal here?
I think the goal is if the board is amenable to revising the joint check agreement with aggregate as well as entertaining a joint check, a joint check agreement with Gorka. Those are the two big items for this evening. Because if Andy is to start the construction, we need to get these contracts in place.
And we're, and we're saying that the, the reason why we're looking at this overall bond estimate is because the 15,000 increase isn't really covered.
Yeah, it's not covered. And plus, it's been a year since we've looked at the bonding and I think it's when, whenever we start talking about the money, you know, I think it's good to refresh our memory of what are the line items and what's, what's being covered, what's not being covered.
Actually, oh yeah, you're right. It's 2019, only a year.
Yeah, it's been a year, so. So I would suggest, I mean, if the board's comfortable with these numbers, comfortable with the idea of doing a second joint, joint check agreement, you know, we, the board could entertain a vote to approve a revised joint check agreement with the $205,000. And then, um, also possibly approve, um, a second joint check agreement with Gorka.
So basically, basically by doing that, by approving the 205, we're dipping into our bond pool if it does come in at the high end.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, or, or Andy's going to have to come up with that difference to get the work done. You know, get, get the 41,000 of work done on, on, uh, 27,000 of cash of bond.
Well, I mean, he's, he's going to do what he does. I guess the, the issue comes into play is if he, if he doesn't do it, we-
You know, we've put in the trees, we cleaned the detention basins. We did the islands. The, all the granite that has to be, um, put in. That's all been done and paid for. We haven't asked for any bond reduction. I mean, we just laid out the money and did it.
Yeah, I mean, it, it does sound like it's closer than the 41.5.
Right. And my, my other concern, and we've talked about this in the past, is the fact that um, we're not holding sufficient funds to cover all of the work that would need to be done if the board were to choose to pull the bond and do the work, you know, ourselves. It doesn't, I, I, Fred's number was 277,000. We're holding 255, um, and that does not include, you know, the increase for prevailing wages, which we would have to pay. So that's, you know, that's always, that's a concern I, I have as well.
Okay. All right, well, is there any other thoughts on the board about the joint checking agreements or the joint check agreements or?
Can I just ask whether any, um, abutters or neighbors, um, online that would like to comment on any of this?
Like to see it get done.
Who was that?
Tim Lacy. And to the, Eric, the point you already made, it sounds like there's a minor, there's a minor difference. And at the end of the day, Andy would have to cover any difference to get the road accepted, so.
Right.
Why, why, why hold this up at this point if we can get all the-
Right. Yeah, I mean, this, 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 this discussion only comes into play if, basically we're pulling the bond, you know, which it's not even as bad as it looks because he's already done some work, although it hasn't been completely reviewed, but it sounds like definitely some has been done.
Eric, I've got a question for Fred. So we, a lot of times we keep referencing that walkthrough that Fred and Joe Lynch did, where they initially identified a lot of the things that, you know, some of the binder that needed to be fixed and, and the other things. And that had to have been over a year ago at this point, I imagine. So do we have a sense that the things that were identified then are still the only things that will need to be addressed now? And I assume aggregate has walked the entire site and, you know, they are in good faith going to pave this to a level that they know the town will accept based on the condition it's in.
Michael, the inspections have been redone.
Okay.
We're not talking. This is, this is-
So Joe and Fred redid the inspection and identified?
And Joe.
Okay.
Let me just answer that, Andy, too, if you don't mind. So, um, March 13th or 14th, we were out there and, um, looked at it again. From that, and if you remember just back a half hour ago, the additional work that, uh, aggregate had added in dollar-wise had to do with some other areas that might need to be done. So they added some more and also more berm was added in. I think up to 5,000 feet now it said on that. I believe we were at 3,000 initially or something along that line. I don't remember the exact numbers. So yes, um, Joe, we had a meeting. I stayed with Gorka, aggregate, and Joe had to leave, but, um, things were talked about at that meeting. I think it was-
Okay.
It was the Thursday, the 16th was a Monday, so I think it was the 13th or something, the Thursday before.
Great. I, I just wanted to make sure someone had walked it since that.
Yes.
Also, Joe was out here again. He walked it.
You're writing an email that you sent it, he sent you. You're right, Andy.
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't, I also don't, I, I mean, one of the big items that, uh, aggregate has budgeted for is uh, 15,500 dollars. That, that is, when we take up the berm, everywhere we take up the berm, that we're going to rip up the binder. And that's a, that's a really far-fetched worst case. It's just, it's not going to be that much. So the actual difference here will be less, but this is worst case.
Yeah, if I can chime in here, um, John Ballot from Cedar Circle and the Development. Um, I, I know we've been talking a lot about the numbers here and, and obviously the numbers are very important. The town wants to hold the 20K plus the insurance, uh, the insurance contract once that's back in place. Um, but wouldn't, wouldn't we, we really just want this to get going? And we're, we're kind of trying to figure out how, if the numbers work out. And if you get to a point where something overruns or underruns, the numbers are going to have to adjust along the way. If you hit the 20K limit, then, then he's done. The bond's not going to be drawn on anymore. And then you'll have to come up with that difference. So is that really something we need to hold up the signing off? We have, we have proposed numbers. We have proposed joint check agreements. We have proposed contracts with aggregate that seem to fall within the bounds of what the, what the board wants to hold, plus the insurance contract when it's in place. Uh, I, I, as a resident, you know, waiting for, you know, three, four, five years now to get this rolling, I think we're as close as we've been. And, and I'd like to just see if the town is comfortable with it, agreeing to move forward with the contracts as they stand, knowing that numbers might change up or down because some work will be added, some work will be deleted, as, as Andy's even saying about the binder and changes in the, in the, uh, in the berms, et cetera. We know that that's going to deviate a little bit from the estimates. It always will. But knowing the town won't go below the 20 grand and that's what Andy has to agree that that's, he'll have to cover above, above and beyond if we end up there. I, that's, that's the bottom line, right? The town needs to hold 20 grand plus the insurance. But I'd like to see the town agree to that. And if these numbers hold, we can move forward, right?
We haven't said we're not agreeing with it yet.
No, I know, I know. I'm not saying you're not. I'm just, I know we're-
Comfortable with numbers and that's what we're doing here. So, you know, you know, we, we have to look out for the, for the well-being of the entire town, not just, not, not, not just, uh, the Century Middle States. So that's part of what we're doing here is to make sure that we understand the numbers and that we're all comfortable with it and the work that still needs to be done. So, um, you know, we, we certainly haven't voted to not make amended agreements or anything like that. So we, we're, we want to get this done too, so.
Oh, I know. I've been at all the meetings. So I, I do appreciate the, the support we've gotten up to now. And I guess I'm just trying to understand the, the risk here. And, and what we're talking about. It's been hard to follow the, the finance discussions. I don't know every line item you guys are talking about, but, um, it seems like we're, we're pretty close to, to the numbers that should be acceptable. So, you know, I for one would like to just move forward. Because if we come out of this meeting without an agreement, it's going to be another, we're now four weeks, six weeks out and then we're going to push to the fall. And we've seen it happen the past two years. So, you know, I obviously I'd like to conclude tonight positively if possible.
This is Vince LaRosa, 73 Old Stone Circle. Um, I just wanted to comment, uh, to what Mike Gore mentioned. Obviously, it's another year more wear and tear and there's not any more money getting put into the bond. So I certainly understand the risk reward, uh, that you're all looking at, but it's not going to become any cheaper. As a matter of fact, as we saw this year, every year could get a little more expensive. So I would just ask that be considered as well. The longer this goes, the worse these roads are going to continue to be, um, the more it's going to cost us in the future. So if it is possible to get it done this year, I know all of us in the community, for the safety of our kids, for a lot of other reasons, would love this to get done as soon as possible.
Okay. Any other comments from the board or? Do you want to just make a motion to accept these or, or we want to do?
Can you put the numbers back up just so I can, um, see what the numbers need to, what the motion needs to be? Sorry.
Sarah, is she still here?
I think we might have lost her.
Yeah.
All right, so let's just give her a second to just log back on.
Um, one more question while, while we wait for Erica's. Kevin Randall, 45 Mill Pond. I, I'm just kind of curious where, uh, where we see, or Andy, where you see, uh, this work starting. Do you have a timeline in, in mind?
Yes, it's set forth in the contracts. Both contracts are set up so that, um, because we, we can't put in a date until these, until these approvals take place, certainly with aggregate. But what we have in the contract is that we're going to issue a notice to proceed to Gorka. They have to start within 30 days. They have two weeks to complete the work. Now, those are very generous, uh, amounts of time. I mean, Gorka estimates two days to raise all of the structures. Uh, that's not all their work, so. Um, and then, uh, aggregate's contract says that we will, from the time we issue a notice to proceed, that they have 60 days to start, or complete within 30. Aggregate's work is probably, uh, you know, three or four days worth of work.
All right, I see. Erica, you're back. Um, can you put up the, um, the different numbers for us to look at for what the motion would need to be?
Sure. For aggregate and Gorka? Yeah.
Andy, has Gorka been a part of any other project on this, on your, um, development?
No.
Okay.
However, they have done work for the town. And Joe Lynch said they did an excellent job.
Okay.
Okay, here are the numbers here. Can, can the board see them?
Okay, so before I make it, we're looking for a motion to, um, update the check agreement, the current amount on the check agreement between aggregate and the town up to 205,000. Then we're going to do it for, do we, do we already have a check agreement for Gorka?
We do not. So this would be approving a joint check agreement with Gorka for that amount.
They submitted the exact same document.
Okay, yeah.
Used for aggregate. It's, uh, and just changed the name.
Sure. So I think, uh, we'll do it in two separate motions, I think probably makes the most sense. So, um, the, what, what was the original amount aggregate? Or should I, why do I need that?
189.660.
All right, thanks. I'll make a motion to approve the joint check account, um, current amount between the town and aggregate from 189.60 to 205, 205,000?
A second.
On favor?
Aye. Aye.
Humanist?
Okay.
Um, and then I'll make a, another motion to approve a joint check agreement between the town and Gorka in the amount of $21,940.
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I think that's it.
Thank you. Andy, did you give an update on that insurance policy? Um, when will you have that in place?
Very, very soon. I can put it in place. Immediately. I mean, I could take care of that immediately.
That would be great if, if we could get that in place now.
I mean, it really, doesn't really have to be in place until the, after the work is done. That's what it's ensuring.
I, I understand that, but I, I prefer to know that it's in place now versus, um, right before the winter. Um, and then the other thing is the construction oversight. I think we should talk about that for a couple of minutes because that is another really important piece that we haven't gotten to. So Fred Hamway, um, during this COVID-19 crisis is unable to do the inspections for CME and for some of the larger other developments that are under construction right now. So I have reached out, um, very preliminarily to Niche Engineering to see if they possibly had availability. They said they may, um, but I need to get them some more detailed information about, um, the work that would need to be done or the inspections that would need to be done. Now, when I raised this, um, with you, Andy, you had concerns about using niche engineering?
I would much- Well, I would much prefer Fred. My second choice would be Joe Lynch because both of them are, you know, familiar with where we are and where we want to go. So I'm sure there'll be a learning curve with somebody else. And that's, that's really the you know, crux of it.
Erica, Erica, the reason why we use, you know, Fred as to have a third, a third party kind of unbiased opinion. But if, if Andy's okay with Joe Lynch, would the town be good with that or?
No. I've, I've talked to Joe about that. He's incredibly busy. He does not have the time to be doing inspection services for the planning board. That, that's just not possible.
Okay.
May I ask a question? This is John Ballots again. May I ask a question just about the vote and what that means exactly? Does that, does that mean that you voted to approve the contracts and they're signed at this point or you have to do some signing? So Andy said there's a 30-day window between when the sign in Gorka begins and then 60-day for aggregate. Does that basically start tomorrow or today? Is, is the board signing off and then Andy has to go get signing and we, we start the clock?
Let me clarify, John. You can't, aggregate cannot put us into his, into their schedule without having a signed contract. I doubt it will be 60 days. But they were willing, I, I just put that in the contract. They want to, I'm sure they want to get started as soon as possible. Same thing with Gorka. It was, it's just to, from a contract point of view and an obligation point of view, since they don't know when I'm going to issue a notice to proceed, we're giving them a lot of extra time. I doubt they'll take it.
Okay, I'm not sure I understood that fully. So you got to sign contract at that, at first I want to hear from the board. So do we, is it basically your vote means these contracts will be signed for joint check agreements? Is that correct?
They don't sign it.
The town does. Oh, your town does not?
No.
The joint checks? Agreements?
They sign the joint check agreement, not the.
That's what I said, yes. So that's, so essentially the joint check agreements are agreed to be signed by the town at this point because of the vote, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So previous is to aggregate having a contract. Andy said they would not sign the joint tech agreement, Andy and aggregate. Now his contract in hand, that's agreed upon with aggregate in principle. You have the joint check agreement, that's, that's in hand, approved by the town. There's nothing holding up the, the signing for Gorka and aggregate and and Andy Benenson to sign those contracts as of now, since we voted. So my, my assumption would be those would all be signed in short order and we, you would give the motion to proceed or whatever that takes. I don't know what that means specifically. But that, that's what I'm trying to get at. So there's nothing holding you up from, from signing these now and moving forward and that, that clock should start in short order is what I'm hoping to hear. Okay.
Andy, once I have the contract, the joint check agreement signed by the board, do you want me to mail them to you?
You can, I, I mean, I think you can mail it, but if you wouldn't mind scanning and emailing a copy, that would be soon as, we need the joint check agreements to do the contracts, to sign them. So as soon as that gets done, as soon as the contracts get signed, then we would issue the notice to proceed. So if you can mail the original, that would be great. And email me a scanned copy if you wouldn't mind, please.
I think we lost Erica again.
Well, Andy, we'll relay with her that what you. Are we all back now?
Yeah, we're getting there.
Okay. Erica, I don't know if you heard what Andy was trying to say. He was just saying, can you, once you get the signed copy, mail the originals and scan it and email him a copy?
Yep, I can do that.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I don't know what happened, but I lost, I was.
I think we all got bumped out.
And is the board comfortable with niche engineering? They're affirmed that the ZBA has used in the past. If, if the board can recommend another inspector, I'm, I'm happy to reach out to another, you know, inspector.
I, I, I'm fine with moving forward niche.
Niche, niche, niche sounds fine. I think we had this conversation in the fall.
We did, we did, so, yep.
So Andy, relating to that, I will need to request some additional funding for the peer review account at some point. We do have some money to get started, but I'll need to replenish that probably, you know, in the next month or two.
Well, you'll need it when we start the work, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Is Fred all square?
Fred is all square. We'll likely have some overlap with Fred and the new inspector, just to make sure that they're on the same page. And Fred said he's happy to, you know, to speak to them over the phone or, you know, what's needed remotely to kind of get them started.
Yeah, that would be good.
All right. Do we have an update on the affordable lots? On the appraisals for the, for the lots?
No. I still need to get you an appraisal.
Okay. Okay.
Another quick question if I can. Kevin Randall here. Regarding those appraisals for the affordable housing, the road acceptance isn't contingent upon that being completed, is it?
It, it is. It's partially, partially related to that, yes.
Yeah, we would want, we would want that to be in order, right?
Yeah, the, the second, the second payment falls within the phases that Andy has control over, so.
And the actions, the, the actions on Andy right now, so.
Yep. Okay.
All right, can we move to the next one? Have we lost that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Bye, Andy.
Yeah, thanks, everybody on the board. Appreciate it.
Bye, thank you.
All right. What do we got left there, Erica? Uh oh, she's frozen again.
Oh, man.
On the agenda was approval of the minute, meeting minutes.
Yep, she's, she sent those, she sent the 13th out. Is that the only one? I forget.
I think that was the only one that, that's the only one I reviewed.
Uh oh, everybody still here?
I'm here.
I'm here. I was just going to say I might be able to bring up the agenda and share my screen. Just hold on a second.
Power user over there.
He's spending too much time on Zoom.
I, I have a lot of meetings.
Are you on a, are you on a green screen, Danielle?
Yeah, she is.
No, I have a virtual background. I have a virtual background. You can just choose one. Not a green screen. I'm actually in my daughter's room, but you choose a virtual background, so you don't have to see her bunk bed behind me.
I was going to say, it's some great copies right there.
I, I wish I had this beautiful bookcase behind me. It looks very nice.
Just going to say, how I'm going to take you to place all those things, just so.
That's not me. All right, here, let me share, share screen. All right, can you guys see the agenda?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so we just finished Century Mill Estates. We have a discussion to distract, oh, we already discussed the construction oversight. All right, so I will bring up the minutes.
Was, um.
Did you decide, did, did all the construction talk?
Yeah, one, one thing on that, like niche was, was niche more expensive last year when we, I feel like.
Yeah.
Talked about it in the fall, so.
Niche most likely will be more expensive, is my guess.
Yeah.
And then if you want, I can bring up the minutes.
I read through them.
Here we go, plan board minutes.
Erica's minutes are always touch, touch.
Yeah.
Can you see the plan board minutes or do I need to share a different screen?
We, we should all have a copy of them. I, I read through them already.
I don't see them, but I read through it, it's fine. The, the, the May 13th was the only one that she sent out. Yeah. I, I looked.
I have August, oh, sorry, I thought, I have August 14th.
That'd not be August.
Oh, maybe that was the, oh, that was the Century Mill Estates ones. Never mind, never mind.
Yeah, we already approved those ones.
Yeah.
All right.
May 13th.
Yeah. I was good with it, so just the motion to approve.
I moved, we approved the minutes from May 13th, 2020.
A second?
So I got, I'll, by Erica, now, so I got, mark me the motion and Danielle seconded it, I guess.
Yep.
James snuck in there.
It's all right, it's all right, Danielle can second it.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, that's everybody. And I think that's it.
And with the last item on the plan board, or do we want to make a motion to adjourn?
Go right ahead.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
On second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Later, guys.